Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our November 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I just want to let everyone know that we did have an executive session this evening where we discussed potential litigation and some personnel issues and potential land acquisition as well. We also had an executive session. EJ, you're going to have to help my memory here at our workshop meeting.
October 15th and October 29th.
October 15th and October 29th, where we also discussed potential litigation. The overview of virtual meeting protocols, EJ.
Yeah, I'll run through these real quick. Just to be clear, this is a public meeting. It's been advertised. It is being recorded using the GoToWebinar platform, and it will be posted on the website once the recording is available. Public comment will be accepted using the question feature on the GoToWebinar platform. Comments and questions on the tree ordinance specifically will be accepted and read aloud during the public hearing, which is the first item on the agenda. All comments on other agenda items will be read during the discussion on that specific agenda item, and any comments on non-agenda items will be read at the end of the meeting during the public comment section. And I would just ask anyone submitting any comments or questions to please include your name and address in order to be recognized.
Okay, Tom, are you ready?
Yes, yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'd like to open the public hearing. The first thing I'd like to say is that the Board of Supervisors has received numerous emails regarding the proposed ordinance, which will be admitted during the hearing as part of the formal record. Because of this, the board will postpone the vote. This postponement will give the supervisors time to consider all of the comments they have received. If changes are made based on these comments, a copy of the ordinance will be made available to the public on the website. The hearing will be continued, and the date for the scheduled date for the hearing, as well as the changes made to the ordinance, will be available on our website as soon as possible. Okay. All right, I'd like to open the hearing, and Bill, I'm just going to turn everything over to you.
All right, thank you. One thing, if I might correct one of your comments, there will be a public hearing tonight, and there will be another public hearing. As long as everyone is here, I think the idea was to let them make their comments rather than have them reset and come back another time. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing on public notice in accordance with Section 609b1 of the Pennsylvania Municipality Planning Code, deals with how zoning ordinance amendments are reviewed prior to... We have Tom Corcoran present, who is our court reporter, who's taking down the evidence and who will receive the documentary evidence, which may be produced during this hearing. This is a legislative hearing. It is not a trial, so there's no formal cross-examination. There's no formal judge or jury. The purpose is for the public to provide comments and to learn more about what the actual proposal means. There are five exhibits that I would like to introduce into evidence before we move forward. The first is Township Exhibit Number One, is a copy of the Tree Ordinance, which is also known as the Conservation of Woodlands and Other Vegetation Ordinance, in the form which was advertised. T2 is the affidavit of publication from the Mercury News Group, twice, 10, October 14th and October 28th, all as required by the Municipality's Planning Code. T3 is the Responsive Review Letter from the Chester County Planning Commission, dated September 4, 2020, identifying its comments concerning the ordinance. T4 is an email dated September 17, 2020, from Kim Yocum, indicating the review of the Township Plan Commission and its action to recommend approval. And T5 is an index of the resident emails received concerning this topic through 4 o'clock today. The time had to be cut at that time because the office had to prepare for this meeting. There are 38 emails that were received. They will all be copied and identified and marked as Township Exhibit 5, and will be made part of the record of these proceedings. I would like at this time to introduce Supervisor Susan Garette, who has been deeply involved with this project from the beginning, and she will take an opportunity to explain the background of the tree ordinance, the reasons for its promotion, and things of that nature. So Susan, if you're ready to go, the floor is yours.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Bill. So I thought it'd be helpful tonight to just kind of give you a little bit of the background on the ordinance, how it came about, and what we're looking to do. So the ordinance is the tree ordinance, that's what we're calling it, and it was first considered by our board about 20 months ago. So I know this seems new to everyone, but this is something we've been working for on about 20 months. And this really came to be, come to our attention, because as many of you may know, we have terrible stormwater management problems in our township, including flooding and areas washing away. So in fact, if you look at stormwater management spending over the last few years, it's become one of our biggest budget items. EJ helped me with some numbers on this, and in the last few years, we've spent almost $600,000 just on stormwater management. So that's a lot of money for a little township like ours. And that doesn't include things like engineering, township staff time, or any of our MS4 permitting-related costs. So the $600,000 are cost solely associated with improvements, repairs, you know, roadwork resulting from flooding and stormwater issues. And we've also spent approximately $100,000 in MS4 permitting requirements, which are also related to stormwater management, and we expect to keep seeing those. So we expect those to keep going up. So in addition to general stormwater and road costs, we've also had to spend a lot of money as areas in our township become problematic due to water issues. We're getting more of those, and they're very expensive for us to fix. So for example, next year, we're looking at roughly spending $500,000 on stormwater management improvement at a project at Pauline Drive. So that's $500,000 on one area of our township that needs improvement because of stormwater. Now, in that case, we were really lucky. We've gotten a grant for part of that project cost, but we're still going to be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars of money as a township due to stormwater management. So again, these costs are substantial for our township. In addition to the million-plus dollars in stormwater management costs that the township has had to incur, will continue to incur, we're also having numerous complaints from our residents about water issues. So many of you may know, you're seeing more water, we're having more water come through our yards, through our township, and the township does not fix personal property owners' water problems. You know, it's just not something we can do. We're not legally permitted to go into private property and fix those areas, and it would also bankrupt our township if we started to deal with water problems on private property. But at the same time, we hurt our residents. We've heard that there were water problems in our township. Almost every meeting last year had someone coming in saying water was being redirected through their yard, they were having a lot of water come through, their roads or driveways were being washed away. So we wanted to help our residents, and we also wanted to try to limit the taxes we are going to have to, tax money we're going to have to spend on dealing with stormwater problems. So we started looking for ways to help ourselves locally. And one thing that many municipalities have are tree ordinances. Now, and I know it seems like really unusual, but this is not really a great invention of ours. Many townships across the state and in other states have them. Trees are really amazing when it comes to water. Trees soak up about 30% of the water that crosses their roots, so they're tremendous in terms of reducing water and water flow. In addition, in our township, we have a lot of problems with erosion. So many of you may have also experienced, you know, that on your properties, where, you know, mud and debris from other properties are flowing through your properties. And trees really help to keep that soil in place. They prevent it from being washed away during flooding. So trees are very helpful, and so that's why we started looking at these tree ordinances, like many other townships have. And I looked at about 20 to 25 tree ordinances from Pennsylvania to try to find one that would be a good fit for us. I picked one, and again, this is about 20 months ago, and I modeled it after another township, and we started looking at it. We started running it through our commissions for feedback. And I will tell you that the first one I put through to the planning commission, they did not like. And lucky for us, they have no problem telling us when they don't like something. Yes. So I'm sorry, I thought someone had a question. So anyway, the planning commission did not like that version, so we scrapped that draft. And I actually learned that the Environmental Advisory Commission had worked on one many years ago. We got a copy of that one, and we started having it reviewed by our commissions. So again, this has taken a long time for our board. We got comments and feedback from our planning commission, members of our Environmental Advisory Council. Some of you may be aware that we used to have an ordinance committee, but this board did away with the ordinance committee, and we now have workshops. So every third Thursday of the month, we have a workshop, and we talked about the tree ordinance at at least three of those public workshops. So those are workshops that are open to the public. We put an agenda out. At one of them, we even had a resident who's an arborist give us feedback. In addition to the workshops and the feedback from our commissions, we also discussed this tree ordinance at our Board of Supervisors meetings. So again, I just want to convey, we've put a lot of time into this. We really tried to draft something that we think would be helpful for our issues. We had our township engineer look at it and give us feedback. We incorporated that. We have also incorporated and submitted this to the Chester County Planning Commission and had them give us feedback. We incorporated that. So I know the residents feel like we're springing this on them, but this has really been something that's been on at least 15 agendas in the last 20 months. We're really trying very hard as a board to be more transparent and to let you know what we're working on. Now, at the same time, we want to make sure that what we're putting out there is something that is going to address the issues we're trying to face, which is, again, stormwater management is terrible in our township and a big problem, but also try to make it workable for our township. So that's why we want to get feedback from our commissions. And what did they tell us? You know, the main thing the commission said to us was they want to make sure that people can take down trees when they need to without a lot of hassle. So if you look in the ordinance, what we've tried to do, and again, we want to hear comments, we want feedback, but we have tried to include many reasons why you want to take down healthy trees and why you should take them down. So for example, there's an exception on safety. So if a tree causes a safety issues, issue threatens a foundation or structure, it can come down. If it's a dead or dying tree, it can come down. I've seen a lot of comments about pruning. We are not restricting pruning at all. We would love for you to keep up with your trees, and that's wonderful if you're doing that. If you have invasive trees, you're taking them down. We're not requiring you to replace invasive trees. So those are an exception as well. This also applies to three or fewer trees, unless we're talking about a very large specimen. So those can come down. And again, we've tried to deal with big property owners. So if you have a large property, we try to define this by one acre lots. So if you have a bigger property, you can take down more trees, again, without going through our process. And I've seen a lot of issues with trees coming down in storms. Again, if a tree's down, it's not covered by this. It's already down. It can be taken out. You can do what you need to with it. One question that's come up, and I know people are frustrated, that we did require permits. So we've had people saying, well, if you're letting us take the trees down, why do we have to get a permit? And that was actually a comment we got from our planning commission, which I thought was a very good comment. You know, what they said is, if we don't have any process, we're not going to know why trees were taken down, if they're taken down for the right reason, and we'd like to kind of get a sense of what's happening with trees in the township. Are we going to see a problem somewhere? So for example, if I live next to someone and he's taken down healthy, eight healthy trees, and I call the township, he could say, well, they're all dead or dying. We'd have no way of knowing if that was the case. So the planning commission suggested, and we thought that made sense, to have a permit required. So you do have to show that it's a dead or dying tree, and actually three or more dead or dying trees. But we made the permit free. So we're not trying to charge residents or make money off this. We just want to make sure that there's some process so we can determine, you know, are we taking down healthy, multiple healthy trees, or are we taking down trees that really are within the permitted exceptions here? We put 30 days in for the tree permit. We're open to a shorter timeframe. So we do want to have residents give us comments and feedback tonight. We did want to begin the meeting tonight, but as Martha said, we're going to postpone the vote. So we want you to have an opportunity to give us comments, give us feedback, you know, improve it if we need to. But at the same time, you know, we do need to start thinking as a township about how to address water issues. We don't want to spend your money on water issues, and we don't want our residents to spend money on water issues. So this is one measure we've taken, or we think we would like to take as a board to try to help with that. So with that, I will turn it back to Martha for comments.
Okay, and now I am just going to turn it over to EJ because I don't have control over the comments.
Okay, I will start. A number of comments have started coming in, some as early as 7 o'clock. So the first comments are from Brian O'Reilly of 110 Viewpoint Lane in Phoenixville, PA. And his comment is, I would like to make sure that I understand that number three, exemptions E, would someone give an example of that? So he's referencing a specific section of the ordinance.
I'm sorry, was that 3E, EJ?
Exemptions 3E, yes. So that exemption is trees removed from existing residential lots, one acre or multiple, where removal is no more than three years, or excuse me, where removal is no more than three trees of greater than or equal to eight inches D V H in any two-year period per acre. So Martha, would you like to pick that, or would you like me to address that?
Does anyone, would anyone else like to answer that?
I don't know what the question was, EJ.
He's asking, would someone give an example of this? He says, I would like to make sure that I understand this exemption. Would someone give an example of that?
Well, I think, you know, that would mean, and we're again, again, we're going to try to do some education on this and set up like a frequently asked questions once we get into this, if we pass this. But, you know, this would mean that if we're, if you want to take down more than three trees, so you want to take down more than three trees on a one acre lot in a two-year period, that's when you would need to come to the township for permitting. So if you want to take down one tree, you know, it's not an issue. It's when you're getting into more than three trees within a two-year period that this would kick in.
It's basically three, three trees per acre per every two years is what the exemption allows for.
And again, those are healthy trees. So those are not, you know, again, the ones that are dead or dying, or, you know, causing trouble with your house or your roof.
We did receive a couple of comments about 15 or so minutes ago regarding audio issues. Not Dave Norris asked if there was audio yet. Susan and Randall, I, we have no sound. Dave Norris, again, we see people talking but have no sound. I haven't, I hope, if you're having sound issues, unfortunately, I think it must be on your end. I did check with a couple of other people on township staff who I know are on and listening, and they said the audio is working fine for them. So I apologize for any audio issues you're having, but I don't, I don't think we're able to address it at this time. The next comment, Anita Schmidt, could you say, could you share some of the comment concerns? That came in about 17 minutes ago. I think that was while you were starting to give the overview, Susan. I think you probably touched on that already, probably after, after that comment came in. Okay, this next comment is from Anthony Tabasso. And just a reminder, everyone, please include your name and address for the public comments. I'm seeing some people including their addresses, but not everybody. Anthony Tabasso, Tom, that's T A B A S S O. I guess we'll provide you, we'll have all this in writing, so we'll give that all to you.
Thank you.
I live on the Pickering Reservoir. Does this ordinance purport to apply to Aqua? Aqua trees fall through my fence several times a year, and from time to time, they come in to remove potentially dangerous trees prophylactically. If they had to get a permit to do so ahead of time, it would pose an increased risk to my family, particularly my autistic son. Also, I have half a dozen trees blighted from lantern flies. Why would I need permission to remove them?
So I can't really address Aqua. I don't really know about, you know, third-party regulators. I don't know if Bill or someone else could speak to that. But again, invasive trees are an exemption. So we're, we would think it's wonderful if you want to get rid of those invasive trees. That's not something we're trying to stop you from doing, and we did try to make it an exemption. So if you take down an invasive tree, you don't replace it or anything.
Okay, this comment is also from Anthony Tabasso. Is there a study by an engineer that demonstrates that restricting tree removal on resident property will reduce your stormwater management expenses?
I'm not sure how to answer that. There's not a study, but you know, we've looked at, sorry, Martha.
I'm sorry. There was some information from the Conservation District. I would assume that the people from the Conservation District are engineers, that they have given to us, and they talk about how trees are very important in stormwater management. So we do have some information from them from a stormwater presentation that they gave a few years ago at the country club at one of the quarterly meetings that we have. I don't have that information here, but I don't know if it's necessarily a study, but they are engineers. I'm assuming they are anyway. So I guess, would it be possible for us to include that information that we received from that as an exhibit, or is that more appropriate just to have it available on our website, EJ?
Bill?
I don't think we need to attach it to this record.
Okay.
The website. I think that would give the public an opportunity to review it.
Okay. Madeline, I know that you sent us an email with that information. I would appreciate it if we could somehow get that up on the website for everyone. There were three slide presentations. That would be great if you could do that for us. Thank you.
Next question, also from Anthony Tabasso. Why does the ordinance treat lots the same, whether they have 10 trees or 200 trees? Removing five trees on the latter property would have a negligible effect on stormwater, while the former could at least arguably have an effect. All properties are not equal.
Well, this was something that we talked about with our commissions. We did think that we should do some lot size, and so we looked at lot size. We did not look at number of trees on lots, you know, honestly, because if you have a lot of trees on your land, you know, they're, they're likely helping us. And so we do want to deter people from just taking down many healthy trees. Now, again, if you have many trees on your lot, and some of them are dead or dying, they've, you know, one category is damaged trees can come down. If they're invasive plants, if they're in any way harming your structure or a safety concern. So again, you know, we are trying to, you know, encourage people to take down trees that don't make sense to have, but healthy trees, and if you have a lot of them, you know, that's a really great thing for our township. It's great for our water issues. It's probably keeping that soil in place. So yeah, we would rather, you know, you not take down many healthy trees.
This next question is also from Anthony Tabasso. Is there an emergency exception? There is not, as it's currently rated. I think Susan addressed previously a number of the different exemptions, which waive some of the ordinance requirements, specifically the permit fees and the replanting requirements for damaged or hazardous trees for those who fall into that emergency.
Right. It's three or more trees. So if you had one tree that was, you know, of course, if it had fallen, you obviously can take it out. There's no restriction at all on that. If you had one tree leaning over your house, you could take that out without this process. You know, it's three or more trees. So we think we've covered that. We have heard people that they would like to not to spend 30 days in the permitting process. But again, that should not be a big deal. It's not, there's no charge for the permit, but we have heard people, and we will try to reduce that amount of time.
Okay. This comment also came from Anthony Tabasso. We feel like you are springing this on us because you are essentially springing it on us. Not a question there. I'll move on to the next one. This is from M A McCann. How is the financial burden to the township going to be helped by the tree ordinance?
I didn't understand that, EJ, or maybe someone else wants to take it who may have understood.
How is the financial burden to the township going to be helped by the tree ordinance?
Well, because hopefully if we have fewer trees being taken out, and we don't have as many water problems, we don't have the water going over the, you know, water will be, you know, soaked up by the trees essentially, not come rushing through our township, rushing down our roads, taking out areas. We're hoping that's going to help us. And again, as Martha was saying, you know, we have heard from, you know, the EAC and other places that this is helpful to us. So we do think that this will help with our water problems.
This is a comment from Anthony Tabasso. Oh, no, pardon me. This is a question and then a comment from Anthony Tabasso. Doesn't this ordinance incentivize me to cut all the trees on my lot now before it becomes effective? This strikes me as counterproductive. He then says, you could have sorted this out when you approved the original developments. Don't punish us now because you failed to implement an effective stormwater management plan 20 years ago.
Well, you know, actually, he raises a really good point, and one of the things we were trying to address here, which is that, you know, interestingly, we spend a lot of time when a new development goes in, that says, you know, where we try to preserve trees, we try to make the developer keep trees, we try to save, you know, some of the bigger trees. And then what happens is those lots get sold off to people. And then at that point, people could take every single tree down that we've just spent all this time preserving through our development process. So, you know, that is not the problem we are trying to address in, at all. But that is, you know, a benefit to this, which is that, you know, once the developer sells off the properties, we still have some, you know, help in terms of encouraging people not to take all the trees down. Now, again, you certainly can take some trees down, but we feel like when you get to three, you know, big, healthy trees, that's when this would apply.
This next comment is from Paul Adak, 1235 Horseshoe Trail in Phoenixville. I would like to review the email of questions I submitted today to hear your replies. Also, can you confirm there is zero cost for the permits now and in future? I don't have your email in front of me. In terms of the permit cost, it depends on what the nature of the permit is. If it's a permit, under the exemption section, there is no cost. If it's not an preemptive tree removal permit scenario, there is going to be a permit fee, which has, which will be established before that it would be once this ordinance is adopted. Next question, Anthony Murphy, 129 Morehole Drive. Can you please provide more specifics on the stormwater issues the township has been experiencing?
You're fading in now a little bit, EJ. You said, I'm sorry, you said you'll have these later.
Yes, we'll have, we'll have all of these comments that are coming in. We'll have those.
Sometimes you fade in a little bit or out on me. That's why. I just want to make sure I'll see it later. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay.
And Fred, your microphone's picking up noise in the background. Can you mute it? If you're not talking, your, your light keeps going on, that there's some kind of noise in the background.
Yeah.
There's, there's nothing, there's no noise.
That must be feedback then from the computer.
Yeah.
All right, muted. Okay, so that last question was, can you, from Okay, uh, so that last question was, can you, uh, from Anthony Murphy, can you please provide more specifics on the stormwater issues the township has been experiencing?
Yeah, I'm not an engineer for the township, so I can't really handle that one.
I'll, I'll give one example.
Okay.
That happened recently, the storm that we had in August, a portion of Jug Hollow Road completely washed away due to this, due to the flooding, uh, uh, the, the stormwater management system in place was overwhelmed. And we, the township spent almost $30,000 just to repair a section of the road that was completely washed away. Um, that's a, a very recent example.
Valley Park Road also had, uh, pieces in the academy lifted up from, uh, a recent flood. It caused a hazard, traffic hazard with people trying to get around it. And, uh, it was pretty ugly, not to mention Creek Road. Uh, had some issues.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great example. Back in, I guess, uh, 2018 into 2019, I think we spent close to $200,000 or maybe $150,000 to rebuild a section of a road that essentially collapsed into the creek. And then same thing with Township Line Road last year, a section of the road was sagging towards the French Creek and we spent, um, considerable amount of money to rebuild and stabilize that. The next question is from A Robert Deegan. Does this apply to lots of less than one acre? I can answer that if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I would think it would apply.
Yeah, it does apply to lots of one, uh, one acre or less and every other lot.
The, the one acre threshold is for basically like the, the three trees in a two-year period that you're allowed to leave without a permit. If the lot is under one acre, you're not, um, that exemption is not provided. Next question, Anthony Tabasso. How will this be enforced? Do you plan to hire tree police to count the number of mature trees on a property? Um, I can take that if you'd like.
Sure.
Uh, the, this will be, well, the township zoning officer will be, uh, the responsible agent for processing and approving permits. Um, and, uh, we will be appointing a, a certified arborist to assist in some of the, um, inspections that may be needed as a result of the permitting process. Next question, Suzanne Randolph. Uh, George and Suzanne Randolph, 1245 H S T D Horseshoe Trail, I'm guessing that is. Um, if this ordinance is passed, can the township then be sued for failure to promptly inspect slash approve removal of a tree, thus raising taxes?
What was the last part of this question? EJ, thus raising what?
Thus raising taxes as a result of being sued.
Well, again, this applies to three or more trees. So it's very unlikely, you know, if you had one tree that was, you know, hanging over your car, you could take that down. Um, this isn't going to apply to that. So, you know, if you have three trees, you know, you would have to go through the process, but the chances that three trees are going to be hanging over your property seems unlikely to us. Um, we are going to, and again, if you're taking three trees down, you're going to have to hire someone, I would think. So, you know, we're going to try to reduce the timeframe for the permit, but you know, it would be something you could, you know, apply for at the same time you get the quotes from the tree person. And if we can do this expeditiously, it shouldn't hold that up at all.
Next, uh, Anthony Tabasso. Who is going to pay for the maintenance of my trees? I have at least 100 on my property and keeping them pruned costs money. If I want to take them down, I should be allowed to do so.
Seems like more of a comment.
Uh, next comment, Dorothy Bedford. Uh, EJ, please remind folks that they can call in for audio to complement the visual. Uh, thank you, Dorothy. Uh, 71 Oakwood Lane, Dorothy Bedford, yes. Um, if anyone's having audio issues, you can call in, uh, the, the phone number and access code in addition to watching the, the, the simulcast, if you get better audio that way. Um, Anthony Tabasso, uh, just, uh, 11 Lockview Lane. He was just letting us know his address. Um, and, uh, A Robert Deegan, also following up with his address, 1736 Nob Lane. Next comment, uh, question, M A McCann, Mary Ann McCann, Quarry Lane. How is the financial burden to the township going to be helped by the tree ordinance? I think we already addressed that one, correct?
Correct.
Uh, next, next comment, uh, Ed Murray, 105 Oakwood Lane. Please provide evidence that past stormwater issues are in any way related to tree removal and any evidence that the ordinance is in any way actually directly related to a plan for future stormwater management. I think we'll take that comment under advisement and as we consider the ordinance. Suzanne Randolph, again, uh, why can't a property owner decide to unilaterally remove a large living tree next to his or her house without having to pay for a replacement tree?
Again, I think we've talked about that, but, um, you know, again, unless it's an incredibly large specimen tree, if it's one tree, you can take it down. And of course, you know, this is only dealing with perfectly healthy trees. If there's any issue with the tree, then you have any exemptions that would qualify. So you would not have to do any of that.
Okay, next comment, Dave Norris. You connect, you connected water problems with a lack of trees. Uh, most of the water problems are coming from developments which the township has approved. Engineering, it's faulty from the beginning.
Well, we're certainly not saying this is the only solution to our water problems and we're certainly welcome any other thoughts or comments that the residents have on this. This is just one measure we think could help, be helpful.
Yeah, and we should point out, we adopted the Growing Greener program over the last few years that any new applications that go in for development, uh, will have more protection than our old ordinances did, uh, regarding what lands billable, what land we want to save.
Good point.
Good point. Next, uh, question, Paul Adak, 1235 Horseshoe Trail. Are trees of heaven considered invasive trees due to the attracted spotted lantern flies? Um, I'm assuming you meant invasive and yes, and yes, they are. Susan, is that correct? The trees of heaven are.
That is correct, yes. Definitely.
Um, the next question, Suzanne Rocky, Diamond Rock Road. Could you define invasive tree? Um, I don't think they're defined in our ordinance, but I think, um, they're defined by, uh, by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, Russ or Paul, do either of you guys, um, know which state agency, um, provides, uh, like list? Um, I'm putting you guys on the spot. I can't remember it off the top of my head. We can follow up and get that.
Well, and EJ too, I can just tell you, what we used in our ordinance was the Pennsylvania Department for Conservation and Natural Resources.
I was just going to say that DCNR has a definition, yeah.
And then we said, or other authority recognized by the township. So, you know, this is something, if a resident feels like there's another invasive tree, we're open to considering and expanding that.
Uh, Dave Norris, following up on his comment with his address, 155 Winterberry Lane. Uh, Anthony Tabasso, if the purported rationale for the ordinance is reduction of stormwater management costs, could you, you should be able to link the two.
Should be able to.
You should be able to link the two.
Oh, thank you.
Any, any comments on that?
I mean, I think Martha already addressed this. You know, we do have, um, information that does link them. So, you know, I'm not sure what more we could add to that other than what, um, experts have been, have been telling us. So.
Uh, next question, Suzanne Randolph, uh, or George and Suzanne Randolph, 1245 Horseshoe Trail. Why should not a property owner be allowed to decide whether adding or removing trees is in his or her own interests and property value rather than the township?
I'm going to speak for myself here and just say that, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're helping the good of the township as a whole. And if taking a bunch of healthy trees down off of property is going to hurt our township. And, you know, again, I don't think the residents have been in our meetings, but we've had residents come in and say that someone took trees down on the neighboring property. It changes the flow of water. It adds to the flow of water. Um, and so we do feel like we have to be more mindful of that. And it, it does, um, we've tried to be measured in how we do this. So it's three or more trees. It's, we've put many exceptions in there, but we do feel like, um, to have to, for everyone to have to pay higher taxes for water problems that could be resolved by people just not taking down a bunch of healthy trees, um, seem like, uh, you know, something to think about.
And there was, there was at least one instance where one of the residents that came in with stormwater issues hired their own engineer to fix their stormwater issues. And the engineer identified the lack of trees on the neighboring property, which had removed trees in the past year or two, caused increased stormwater across their, uh, property and increased, uh, flooding in their backyard. So it's, it's not isolated. It's happened a few times now. And we're trying to take that into consideration when we draft these ordinances.
Uh, the next question comes from Deb Wilson, uh, Vice Chair of the Friends of the Medal of Honor Grove, stewards of the Grove at the Freedoms Foundation. We maintain 42 acres of open space and have hired Morris Arboretum to digitize and identify our trees. They also gave a plan that included over 400 trees, dead and dying or ash to be removed. We have finished 200 plus so far with more planned for next year. How does this ordinance affect the Friends of the Grove?
So I would think it applies the same as it would to any other resident, but if these are dead and dying trees, then, you know, that's going to be an exception. So you would file the, for the free permit, um, and if they're dead and dying, no problem at all. We totally understand you would want to take those down. And there'd be no limit. You could take down 100 dead or dying trees.
Right. And if you've already had, uh, Morris Arboretum, you know, digitized and identified, then you could just provide as the, as the evidence, um, you know, their report with the permit application and that would be enough for it to be approved. Um, another comment from Dave Norris. Specifically identify an area of water problems that is directly caused only by lack of trees.
Yeah, I can't do that. I feel like these have been addressed. I mean, I think Mark gave examples.
There, there are, there are typically multiple causes to these stormwater issues, but trees are identified as a contributing factor. They are typically not the sole factor, but trees do reduce water flow through, through their root systems. So I cannot identify a property where it is 100% of the problem, but there, there have been instances, say off of, um, off of White Horse Road, I know, had some issues where they, they had removed trees. So it's, it's, again, it's, it's not going to be 100% tree removal causing the issue. It's going to be a, a combination of things such as the grading of the land and tree removal. Put together, that creates a bigger problem.
Uh, the next question, um, actually looks like it's right along the same lines. Uh, this is Tom Fortin, 36 Vincent Road. Have there been any problems identified in the township that were directly attributed to tree removal done by individual property owners? So that's already been addressed. And just keep in mind that I'm reading these comments in the order they were entered. So that comment was from about almost 20 minutes ago. So there, you know, is a lag and then some that have already been addressed. Mary Ann McCann, Quarry Lane, the, uh, looks like the comment was cut off. All it says is the burden from the stormwater. Rebecca Loughlin, uh, former resident of Schuylkill Township, uh, now borough of Phoenixville, worked on this ordinance on the EAC in 2006. Speaking to lot size, even one tree has value on a small property. A mature evergreen can intercept more than 4,000 gallons of rainwater per year. In urban and suburban settings, a single deciduous tree can intercept from 500 to 760 gallons of rainwater per year. Thank you. Uh, Brian O'Reilly, 110 Viewpoint Lane, Phoenixville. It looks like he was just adding his address to our previous comment. Next comment, Mary Ann McCann. This is not true. The stormwater destroys trees. Um, that came in 19 minutes ago. I'm not sure if that was in reference to, um, all the X1. Barry Bustle, 10 Clean Tree Lane. How will you determine the health of the tree? Pictures or in-person visit? Um, I think we would allow pictures, um, on a case-by-case basis. If, if you're certifying, um, that the tree is dead or diseased or damaged or hazardous. Is that, uh, am I correct in that? I don't want to.
Yes.
I think that's right. Yeah.
That's correct.
Um, Dave Norris, uh, you are hoping this ordinance will help a water runoff problem. What do you know? Move on to the next one. Paul Adak, 1235 Horseshoe Trail. Have you considered the negative impact on property value with heavily wooded lots by adding these restrictions? Fred, Fred, you're muted. Fred, Fred, we can't hear you. You're, you're self-muted. Fred. Fred, we can't hear you. You're, you're muted.
Hello, my, uh, my battery's going down and I want to ensure that everyone knows there that I agree to the bill's, uh, uh, bill policy and everything. So legally wise and everything, that I'm in approval of it, uh, with the board, okay? Thank you. I, I will stay on until I drop off.
Okay.
Hey, EJ, could you repeat the last question on the, on the chat?
Yes. Uh, this was Paul Adak, 1235 Horseshoe Trail. The negative impact on property values with heavily wooded lots by adding these restrictions.
Oh, Jesus.
We, we have not done a study on that. We cannot respond.
Um, Brian O'Reilly. Has the township considered a tree planting ordinance? Should we not make sure that everyone is doing their share? I think that's kind of addressed in this ordinance there. For situations where permits are required that don't need the exemptions, there are replanting requirements. Um, so it is addressed to a certain extent. I'm not sure what other kind of tree planting ordinance he's, um, talking about. I'm not sure if anyone else has thoughts on that.
I, I don't think we could do a standalone version of that, but we do have it incorporated, as you've said, into this ordinance.
Okay, Anthony Tabasso. If I have 200 trees and I want to take down 10 walnut trees because I hate walnut trees or because they block my view of the moon, that will not implicate stormwater. It is not in the board's purview to discourage me from removing trees.
That seems like a comment.
Comment.
Okay, Rebecca Loughlin. Tree protection is a valuable part of a comprehensive stormwater management plan. Melissa Cross. It sounds like you are saying a permit is required no matter what. Requiring a permit means someone identified by the township has the option to say no. How can you possibly guarantee that this won't occur? Someone could say trees aren't damaged or dead enough. Moving into a new home on the mountain, I had to take six trees down. How can you guarantee I wouldn't have to live with problematic trees because this person denied my permit? My family would have been at risk during these past storms.
Can I?
Well, I can just say.
I, I lived on the mountain for years too, on Rock, Rock Hill Lane and had to take down trees that, an arborist told me were a threat to my house. If they fell, they, they could cause injury to my kids nine. We, we took them down, you know, if it were today, I'd have to go in. I don't live on the mountain anymore, but if I did, I would have to go in and get a permit. I think there were maybe five or six large trees, which I really didn't want to take down, but I, I didn't want my kids getting hurt or having them come through the roof during a storm. And as everybody knows, the mountain has a low root system with a lot of shale, rock hill lane. You know, it was a lot of rock and a lot of soil and the trees came down every time the wind blew. So I sympathize with everyone up there. And there are trees that have to be removed, probably up there more than anywhere else. But I think the permitting process and the way we, we wrote this up, I think everybody would agree on, I can't speak for my boardmates, but if it's dangerous, if it's putting your family at risk, we want to see you do what you have to do.
And we're going to want to err on that side, as Bob's saying, we're going to err on, want to err on the side of letting people take them down. I mean, we don't want to have an issue, a safety issue or liability issue. So if there's an issue, it's damage, we certainly are going to want to let you take that down.
And I'll just add procedurally, because this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, there are very specific, you know, appeal procedures available to, to resident, to any applicants. In the event that a permit would be denied, you know, there is an appeal process that you could pursue. Okay, I lost where I was on the list here. Next up, Anthony Tabasso, sorry, EJ, I know I'm persistent. Okay, that's quite all right, Anthony. That's, that's what this is all about. It's all good. Susan Aronfield, EJ, can you take your hand away from your face and speak up a little, please? Sure. The reason I'm doing this is this is where the microphone is. And I was told earlier that my sound was bad, so I was, I was trying to make it better. I don't know. What, what's the best way to do this? Is it, is the audio good when I'm like this?
Seems to be about the same.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Susan, for the, for the feedback. Patricia, Patricia Eglin, 5 Forge Mountain Drive. Is there any consideration to reducing or eliminating development in an effort to save trees and reduce water issues? Bill?
Do you want to speak to that as part of a cast member of the Open Space Commission?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, we have to follow the MPC and when developers come in, we have to play by the rules. And there has not been a lot of development in the township in the past 10 or 15 years. There are a couple of things we're dealing with now. But I think everybody on the board agrees that when development comes in, that one of the things we look at and try to foster is tree growth and tree development and saving trees. So the board is, you know, really aware of the tree issue with, with new development, even though there hasn't been a lot.
Well, one of the things that happened when the Open Space Commission came into existence, we, we immediately identified properties that were at risk, were closer to development than others, and went out and did everything we can to procure conservation easements. Had a lot of success in preserving land that would have been developed. So we've taken a lot of effort there. Your taxes are going to good use there. Good example, the Paulings development that's going on right now, we were able to preserve two-thirds, I believe, of that property. Would have been a larger development, but the entire ribbon of wooded area back behind that that borders the neighborhood, the meadows, Valley Forge, I think it is, is all permanently preserved with an easement. Valley Park is an open space acquisition. There's easements on the Phoenixville Country Club, Freedom Foundation, Medal of Honor Grove, Pickering Valley Golf Course. All of these are efforts that your, your tax money and the Open Space Commission and the board all supported. And so it has been a serious effort. And as I mentioned earlier, the growing greener gives a developer an option to get a similar yield that, to what he would get by clear cutting a property if a development goes in by clustering the houses. And we would have a say in what land is protected, the more sensitive land, the wetlands, the woodlands, that sort of thing. So we have made a lot of effort and we can't reverse what was done in the past by former boards and engineers. We have to work with what we have now. We're, we're making a lot of progress in the area.
Anything else on that? I know someone else I tried to speak up.
I was going to mention the, the Going Greener ordinance that we just passed, but Bob mentioned it, so.
Okay, the next, this is Melissa Cross, 110 Ford Mountain Drive. She's just following up with her address. Brian O'Reilly, were any of these water issues documented and shown to be caused by trees coming down? I think that's been addressed already. Paul ADAC, 1235 Horseshoe Trail. Why are you passing the cost permit fees for property owners simply maintaining their properties?
Can you repeat that, EJ? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, he said, why are you passing the cost permit fees for property owners simply maintaining their properties?
I think they're, I think they're asking, why are we passing something that has a cost to the taxpayer, such as a permit fee?
Keep in mind, we're residents also, so we're, we have to live by the same rules of setting here that we all want to maintain our properties. Maintenance isn't the issue here as much as it is free removal of healthy trees. But pruning, taking down dangerous trees, dead trees, invasive trees, trees that could impact subject, that sort of thing. I mean, I think we tried to cover as much of that as we could.
George and Suzanne Kinsler, 1245 Horseshoe Trail. The Jug Hollow Road repair was in a heavily wooded area with no development. So how would this ordinance stop the problem? I can't speak to that specifically. Other than, you know, water, water flows downhill in that area. That's the bottom of a mountain, so it would certainly be impacted by runoff, you know, emanating higher up that could have been caused by trees that have been removed. Similar comment, not a question, but a comment from A. Robert Deegan. I fail to see how this ordinance is going to correct an existing problem on Jug Hollow, on Jug Hollow and Township. Those three projects that were mentioned earlier. Alex Wilhelm, will enforcement be performed using aerial photography? Is there an expected amount of revenue to cover costs of enforcement? We haven't really discussed that yet. Again, the goal of this is not, we're not trying to make money. We'll be looking at our fee schedule and establishing a fee that's consistent with some of our other zoning and building permit fees that are on the fee schedule.
Yeah, I'm sorry, EJ. You pre, I'm having a little hard time. Did you repeat the last part there? Sorry. You're having a hard time.
I just said, we'll be looking at our fee schedule and establishing a fee for the tree permits that's consistent with the other building and zoning permit fees that we have. Also, Alex Wilhelm, why if a tree, why if a tree falls, question mark? What is the strategy when storms occur similar to what we had this year? How will the permits be expedited for homeowners?
If trees fall, they, they do not require a permit? So I, I think that covers the question. Please submit another question if you need more clarification on that.
Well, and I think, and I think Susan mentioned earlier that the board has been, you know, taking into consideration changing the permit turnaround time based on some of the comments we've received. Can you please, this is A. Robert Deegan. Can you please explain how this ordinance is going to correct existing problems with Jug Hollow Creek and Township or Valley View? That was the same question a couple of minutes ago. Alex Wilhelm, personally, this ordinance sounds, sounds like a statue one might find in an HOA, not a township. Has this ordinance been implemented in other townships? If so, what has been their experiences and reaction from their residents?
So I can just say that other townships around us have similar ordinances. And if you, you know, there's a website that lists about 58 ordinances like this in Pennsylvania. We did not hear of any negative feedback. I don't know, EJ, if you've ever heard of negative feedback from other township managers. I think one told us to make sure we keep the permitting process simplified. But I think that was the only negative response or comment we received.
Correct. And, and the website is, I think it's conservationtools.org. As if you go to that website, there's a number of examples of different tree ordinances. Rebecca Loughlin, because just like stop signs, vaccines and masks, trees benefit the public. Plenty of evidence on that. And then she followed up with, we all live downstream from someone. Thank you. Ed Murray, a significant portion of the trees in the township are invasive, particularly Norway maples. If these are removed at the national park several years ago, there will be a significant loss of tree cover. As the township surveyed the actual trees in the township to determine how pervasive these invasives are and how important they are to stormwater management.
We have not, we did think about whether to have people replace invasive trees, but we did not decide to do that.
That's, yeah, for this question. Gregory Thompson, and again, just to remind everybody, we're on about a 20 minute, 20 minute lag from when these comments came in. Greg Thompson, PDA Tree Service, Certified Arborist, 140 Davis Road. You are wrong in assuming only three or fewer trees could be hanging over property structures. It's obvious more thought and time needs to be invested in this process before you move forward. One size does not fit all here by pulling your information resources from studies not associated with the area. The mountain is unique in its geography. That was a comment. Deb Wilson said thank you to our response to her comment from about 20 minutes ago. Ed Murray, what actions are being taken to reduce the stormwater runoff from the golf course that residents spent a large sum to preserve as open space several years ago and contributes to the problem enormously compared to individual properties?
Not familiar with that.
I'm not familiar with that either. I mean, that's never been brought to our attention as an issue as far as I know, at least not in the two years that I've been here. Alex Wilhelm, 130 Picket Post Lane, Phoenixville. Question on aerial enforcement, tree falling and implemented in other township. Again, it's hard to, that came in about 20 minutes ago, so I'm not sure exactly what he's referring to. I think we kind of addressed that already and there's not really a question there. Melissa Cross, 110 Valley Forge, or excuse me, 110 Forge Mountain Drive. Many of the clarifications you are making are not documented. How can ensure what you state tonight won't change? Are you going to update the ordinance with all these clarifications?
Well, what I've mentioned is in the ordinance. And I'm, you're welcome to call me afterwards to ask me about specific ones. But if you look in the applicability section, which is on page seven, it talks about some of those exemptions. And the invasive tree section is on page five. So we did try to write these in there.
I think the only change discussed tonight was perhaps shortening the permit term, permit turnaround. I think, I don't, I can't recall anything else that's been suggested changed by our board yet.
The next question, Paul ADAC. How can you consider this ordinance without considering the negative property value impact on property owners? This doesn't make any sense. I think we got a similar question or comment a little while ago. I'm not sure if anyone wants to speak to that. Anita Schmidt, 30 Amherst Court. We moved here in part because of the tree-covered hills, but they are, they are a responsibility and potential liability. I have an arborist check my trees periodically and take action when needed. So I was aware of this proposal and stormwater discussions by regularly listening to your meetings. I agree with your stated reasons and need also, and need to prevent developers or others from destroying large numbers of healthy trees for convenience. I agree with replanting as part of the process, but the proposal seems complicated for the average homeowner. Could we simplify the formula to a simple statement? It is three trees in two years regardless of the size of the lot to obtain a permit.
Well, we did talk about doing some FAQs if we pass this so that we can kind of put maybe like a sheet of, you know, frequently asked questions out there to help people. We did put the one acre lot in there because we did, you know, recognize that if you have five acres, you should be able to take down more trees. So we did want to keep that lot size in there, but we are hoping to kind of make, you know, this is an ordinance, so it has to be drafted very legalistically. Or we are hoping to create some, you know, more easy to read documents to go along with it.
Melissa Cross, thank you, Mr. Cooney, but my question wasn't answered. How can you guarantee my permit won't be denied? And we can't, we can't guarantee it. If the permit meets the requirements of the ordinance, then we would have no grounds on which to deny it. Just like any other permanent application, subdivision application, anything that we receive, there has to be grounds to deny it. I think the ordinance spells that out. Okay, I lost where I was here. I apologize. Mary Ann McCann, each tree is a different scenario. I have no idea how the township will take on evaluating every tree in every different situation. Living on these lots with old trees, even healthy ones, is hazardous. For example, during storm Sandy, we had a giant oak more than 90 feet tall miss our house by a slight margin. There are countless scenarios such as this. How will the township attempt to manage it in a timely manner?
I mean, I guess I'm not sure what I would add other than, you know, we're making it a free permitting process. We're going to talk about reducing the time. If you have dangerous or threatening trees, certainly let us know and we want you to take them down. So we're hoping to make that permitting process free and easy. So we don't really see that as being an issue.
And if the trees already come down, then the, the ordinance does not apply. Brian O'Reilly, 110 Viewpoint Lane. If you're going to err on the side of taking down, shouldn't a private homeowner get to make that decision without a permit? I think the answer is not, is no, according to the ordinance. But, but the ordinance addresses that. Melissa Cross, 110 Forge Mountain. Your comments are all verbal and there's nothing guaranteeing this in the future. You just stated that township zoning officer would decide this and not an arborist. Why wouldn't you have a trained individual if you are giving someone the right to say, to say no? I can, I can just speak to that since this is part of the zoning ordinance. It, it ultimately falls on the zoning officer whether or not to issue the permit. But depending on the nature of the permit, we do have other professional consultants that we rely on for input. And the zoning officer relies on their input before making a final decision on a permit. So in this case, that would be the certified arborist. They just, they just want to have the authority to actually issue and approve the permit. They just, they just want to have the authority to actually issue and approve the permit. But they would be the ones giving the recommendation for approval. Anthony Tabasso, what is the enforcement mechanism? If I remove four trees in a year, what punishment is needed out upon me by our arboreal overlords? That would fall under, I apologize. That would fall under the enforcement section. Again, this is, this is proposed as an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So there's a separate section of the zoning ordinance dealing with enforcement and penalties. That's existing, none of that's proposed to be changed. That's all on the website and our, and our electronic e-code. Dave Norris, you've indicated tree removal will be approved, but you know that's not true. So if the answer could be no, you can't remove the tree, what is the next step for the homeowner? Court, question mark? Again, I think we already addressed that. There is an appeals process in the zoning ordinance. You would appeal, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, it would just, if the zoning officer denies a permit, you could appeal it to the zoning hearing board.
Zoning hearing board, there's a full-blown hearing before the zoning hearing board, and that can be appealed to Chester County Court. So it can be a long process. The property owner has numerous rights of appeal.
Brian O'Reilly, this seems like an incredible infringement on private homeowners, especially on the mountain with large or older tree growth. Okay, next question. Mary Ann McCann, Quarry Lane. We were told that there will be no fees for the permit. I'm sorry if we just heard you say otherwise. Can you clarify, please? There are no fees. It's an exempted permit. So that the, the page of the ordinance that's on the screen right now lists the exemption. So in a situation where there's a, you have a dead or diseased or hazardous tree, for example, there's no fee. In a situation where you're looking to take down healthy trees, for example, if you want to put a pool in and there's trees in your backyard that need to be removed to put the pool in, you will need to get a permit. You will need to pay the permit fee and the replanting requirements will apply. So you would need to follow the table in the ordinance for replanting in a different location on your property. Steve Coons, 1015 Brookwood Drive. You should point out that an unlimited number of trees less than eight inches D V H can be taken down without any permit. Great point. Steve's a member of our EAC. Yeah, the, the, the permit requirements only kick in for trees that are eight inches in diameter or D V H's diameter, breast height, or greater. So under that, the ordinance does not apply. Okay, Jonathan Myers, 555 Country Club Road. Comment, not a question. I think it's in the interest of the township and the residents to have this tree ordinance to preserve the character of our community and to help mitigate erosion and stormwater issues. Obtaining a free permit before removing a few trees is a pretty minimal inconvenience. I have had neighbors that have removed significant number of trees, numbers of trees, and the many days of noise, disruption, and heavy equipment driving over lawns and blocking roads is exactly the kind of project worthy of a permit. If a lot of residents were frequently removing large numbers of trees, everyone would be complaining about the lack of an ordinance and the need for permitting to regulate this disruptive activity. This ordinance is actually overdue and is a perfectly reasonable guideline for our township. Thank you.
Fred, you're muted.
Fred, you've got on mute, and then we can hear you.
One, has this been approved by National Lands Trust? And two, do we have to send it to Chester County to be approved?
We already did send it to National Lands, or to Chester County, Fred, so it has been approved by them. We incorporated their feedback.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
The next comment is from Dorothy Bedford. As of 2017, there were 108 municipalities with tree ordinances in Pennsylvania. Alex Wilhelm, 130 Picket Post Lane. For the townhomes being built adjacent to my development on Paulings, would they assess any impact fees for the amount of trees removed? Can I answer that if you'd like me to?
Go ahead.
No, this ordinance was not in place then. What the township did, procure a conservation easement on about two-thirds of that property as part of the negotiations during the land development process. And years ago, many years ago.
19 acres, I think.
19 acres, yeah. Ed Murray, the golf course runs down onto Jug Hollow Road.
And EJ, I can speak a little bit to that. Jug Hollow has a myriad of issues. You know, somebody asked if we think that the trees not being there have an impact when there are already so many trees. And that's an animal all its own down there. It's a problematic area that we, we have a, you know, we inherited. Everybody that lives there has issues and challenges that are really tough to deal with. But imagine if somebody clear-cut all the trees on the east side of Jug Hollow or on both sides. It would only make it worse. So it's bad already, it could be worse. You know, we'd love to do what we can to help mitigate, but that's something we all inherited, and it's, and you guys did too. So it's definitely an area that's a challenge.
Gregory Thompson again. So the township needs more money to deal with the stormwater issue and feel to generate revenue. You plan to impose a tax, in parentheses, tree ordinance, upon the resident. My question, when the township needs more money for whatever reason, how did the township plan to get more revenue? Raise permit fees, find other ordinances to implement, and charge fees, question mark?
The permit fees are required by law to be reasonably related to the costs incurred in the enforcement and management of the ordinance. So this is not a fee generating idea.
Revenue generating idea. It is not a revenue generating idea.
Yeah, and I would just echo what Susan said towards the beginning of this. You know, in all of the discussions on this tree ordinance going back for the past 20 months, that, you know, numerous board meetings, planning commission meetings, all of which there are minutes for, I think you could probably check them in and see that fees were never mentioned. That was never part of the conversation among the board and as an impetus for this ordinance. It was never for that reason, and I think the township's record would very clearly reflect that. Steve Coons, follow-up. Not that we are encouraging taking down an unlimited number of trees less than eight inches D V H. Yes, it is exempt from the ordinance, but we're not encouraging to just clear-cut tiny trees. Anthony Tabasso, how is the lot size more relevant than the number of trees? A 10-acre lot with 10 trees is allowed to remove all 10, while a three, while a three-acre lot with 100 trees is not. What engineering data backs up the distinction in the ordinance? I think we've kind of covered that. It's not based on engineering data. This, you know, those were sections that we went back and forth on for a while, based at all of, you know, other strong samples. And what we saw was would be the easiest to implement and enforce among other municipalities that have these in place. Yeah. I don't know if anyone wants to add to that. Brian O'Reilly, 110 Viewpoint Lane. Would the board consider some language through the number of trees on the one acre lot? If I have over 100 and my neighbor has only five, shouldn't that be considered?
That is, that, that is not considered in terms of the minimum for the permit fee, but it is considered in terms of how much, the maximum amount of trees that can be removed per acre when it's classified as like a forest, I think.
A woodland, something.
Yeah, woodland's designation, which would be the density question you were asking about. I think it's like, you can't remove more than 20% or something in a certain, I don't have the full ordinance right, right in front of me. So I don't have the exact number, but it dealt with the percentage of a woodland being removed on a certain property versus just the three-tree discussion we've been having so far. It gets into more detail in the ordinance.
EJ, how many more do you have on your list? I'm thinking we've been at this an hour and a half. There will be another hearing, I'm presuming, if changes are made to the ordinance. Would there be a way to freeze the questions and get to them next time? There's a full hearing coming up tonight. I'm just throwing that out to you, Martha, as well, in terms of your chairmanship. There's no requirement in the law that we get to every question tonight, especially if there's going to be another hearing.
Yeah, we have about, I think about a dozen, a dozen left at this point. We have, we have caught up, we're, we're only 11 minutes behind at this point.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I'm just, I'm just trying to.
That's a good point. That's completely up to the board. You can close it at any time since we'll be continuing.
I'd like to hear everything we can now because we're, we're going to have time to think. Come back next month. So I'd say keep going.
Agreed.
I agree.
Agreed.
Anita Schmidt, Susan's idea of FAQs would be helpful as shown by a number of comments asking for examples. Yep, I appreciate that. Mary Ann McCann, Quarry Lane. Can you please talk more about the woodland brush part of the ordinance that seems very broad?
I'm not sure what I could add to that. I think Steve may know more if he's still on, but I don't know if there's a specific question about it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no more follow-up or specifics there. I think she's talking about the section on, you know, disturbance of woodlands and hedgerows, which is what Mark just mentioned, no more than 25% of a woodlands area on a lot shall be disturbed from the date of this ordinance being relatively. So I, without more specifics, I'm not sure.
I think, I think it was a question on the undergrowth or something, so.
The woodland brush part of the ordinance that seems very broad.
Yeah.
By the way, Russ and Paul, if there's any point that you, you know, guys think of something that we're forgetting, feel free to, feel free to chime in, especially if I say something wrong.
Yeah, you know, EJ, the one point I wanted to make, because as I'm listening to all that, and I think we talk about stormwater, I think Rob or Bob had a very good point about trees, wooded lots generate runoff. It doesn't stop if you have a tree. And just imagine if the Jug Hollow area had no trees, what the situation would be there. And Bob's also correct, and there's a lot of things that contribute to runoff, not only ground cover such as trees, but it's slope, it's the soil type. And all these things are important together. But certainly when Paul and I do runoff calculations on a, on a, on a property, a wooded lot simply generates much less runoff. It's that simple.
Russ, is it safe to say that golf courses might contribute to more runoff because they're so closely cut to the ground and they're not designed to prevent runoff like a wooded area would?
Yeah, there's absolutely no doubt that lawn or a manicured lawn compared to a natural wooded lot will generate runoff. Stormwater management facilities that have to control that runoff from that lawn-type area, Bob, are much larger than ones that would have to control runoff from a wooded lot.
Thanks, Russ.
And regarding the question, I think I figured where it is. It's, it's in page 3, A1, lowercase a. It's, it's regarding the understory shrub and herbaceous species that are mentioned in that part of the ordinance. And I think it's just, could we speak more to that?
Yeah, I think that section is just basically defining what woodland, what would constitute a woodland disturbance under this ordinance. And yeah, as Mark said, it's right there, lowercase a.
And. I was just, I was just saying, removal of the, any, any shrubs or, or undergrowth there. If it's a resource that's not an invasive species or a weed or something, it's going to count as one resource as part of the woodland and count towards the 25% qualification under disturbance of woodlands and hedgerows.
Thank you. Next question, Greg Thompson. How much money do you plan to generate from this tree ordinance? I think we've addressed that already. Ed Jackson, just so I understand, if I have one standing dead tree, I need to apply for a pre-permit. Will the township send someone to verify the tree is dead? The zoning officer, doesn't he have time? Or does he have time at what cost to the township for his time? I think as mentioned earlier, a situation like that, you could provide a photograph of the tree or, you know, certainly if you have an arborist or a tree expert who can, you know, they could fill out the permit for you and certify based on their expertise that the tree is dead.
And again, keep in mind, unless it's one of the very large, I forget what we call them, specimen trees, it wouldn't apply at all. So you would just take it down because it's not three or more?
Yeah, good point. I missed that. A. Robert Deegan, can you explain why this ordinance addresses equally both developers, where the concern is clear-cutting versus a homeowner maintaining their property? I love trees and am not interested in cutting down healthy trees, but I am offended by the requirement that I take, that I obtain a permit to take down a dead tree.
So get, well, do you feel like that was, I mean, again, you're not going to get a permit to take down a dead tree. So I'm not sure what to add there.
Yeah, and speaking to dealing with developers taking down trees that's covered in an existing ordinance, this is a different, different topic.
This supplements the saldo portion. There's a tree protection zone portion of the subdivision and land development ordinance. And this would supplement that in addition to, you know, applying to existing individual properties.
Thanks, EJ.
Good thing. Paul ADAC, have you considered simply not charging a permit fee? We have not, but we'll take it.
We haven't discussed fees yet. And that is something that we could consider.
Ed Jackson, 150 Diamond Rock Road. Can we apply for a permit through the website or by email? Yes, but currently, you can't apply directly through the website, but we are accepting permit applications through email. Obviously, if it's a permit that requires a fee, you're going to, you know, have to arrange to either mail the fee or drop it off at the township building. We do not have, we do not accept credit card payments electronically through the website, but you can submit the permit via email. Gregory Thompson, how much money will it cost the township to implement this ordinance? Does the benefit outweigh the cost? What financial studies were completed to develop a plan to generate revenues in this manner? Again, we're not trying to generate revenues here. We didn't conduct a financial study. I don't know if anyone wants to say anymore. Currently, there's four, four comments left as of right now. Has the committee considered the fact that this may reduce the amount of tree maintenance that occurs? And as a result, increase the amount of damage that will occur as a result of the increased number, as, as a result of the increased number and severity of storms?
But I don't think this should affect tree maintenance. It has nothing to do with pruning. That's wonderful if you're pruning your trees, keeping them in shape. And if you have a dead or dying tree or damaged tree, it doesn't stop you from taking it down. So even if you had three dead or dying trees, you would still be able to take it down. You would just have to get the permit that's free.
Yeah, any, anything that we would consider maintenance is not, not, not being covered by this ordinance or by this permit. This, this is, those are separate issues and there's nothing stopping you from doing your maintenance.
Hey, next comment, Mary Ann McCann, Corey Lane, Suzanne has stated repeatedly that the township has taken a great deal of time to create the conservation plan. Would it be unreasonable to suggest that more time is spent to evaluate all the questions that were answered incompletely during this meeting? Not only are most residents unaware of the proposed ordinance, we are still in a shutdown.
We're certainly going to take your comments into account.
And like, like many businesses have around the country and many, and most government organizations around the country, we are operating remotely. And we've been able to host our meetings online as, as you've seen tonight. So we haven't completely shut down operations. Things have to keep moving and this is evidence of the process continuing, even during the shutdown.
Question from Gregory Thompson, what township did you replicate this ordinance from? I would like to know if it resembles Schuylkill Township.
Well, so remember what we did initially pick one that was a local ordinance. And I forget, EJ, if you remember which one we used, but our planning commission did not, which one?
Initially, it was East Pikeville Township that we considered.
Yeah, and then our planning commission did not think that was a good fit for our township. So that's when we went back to one that the EAC had drafted many years ago and we started with that as a base.
Yeah, and I think if I remember correctly, back from 2012, when the EAC was working on this, they used North Coventry Township as a model. One of the. Yeah, there's an existing PowerPoint presentation from 2012 or 2013 when this was first considered. And it mentions that ordinance. Ed Jackson, 150 Diamond Rock Road, so to take down one dead standing tree, less than three or more, you don't need a permit at all? Question mark.
So you do not unless it's a specimen tree. So there are very large trees that we defined in here. If it was a very large tree, you would need to go through the process. And again, we tried to limit those to the very large trees in our township. We're trying to preserve specimen trees. Many townships have something like that. Most trees don't fit into that. So normally you're just looking at a regular tree and no one tree would not, you would not have to do anything.
Question is from Ed Murray, how should a layperson determine that a deciduous tree is dead in winter? I have no idea.
I have no idea either.
I would say that you'd, you'd want to watch it through the spring, summer, fall. And that would give you an indication if it was dead by the winter. And if you're not sure, if you just bought the property and moved in, you could check with, you know, an arborist to get an opinion.
Yeah, I would expect you would contact a tree company to come out and look at it and determine whether or not it was dead or dying in the winter. If you needed to, if you were worried for your safety on that.
Mary Ann McCann, Corey Lane, is it possible to vote on an ordinance that has not discussed permit fees yet? Yes, the permit fees are legislated by resolution, not in the ordinance. So if you look at that section of the ordinance, it simply states that the fee will be set by resolution. Ed Jackson, 150 Diamond Rock, 14 pages to read if you can legally take down a tree. The ordinance should be greatly simplified. Thank you. Dorothy Bedford, the Phoenixville Country Club golf course is over 100 years old and has two retention ponds on the property, which is to say the vast majority of homes which might use the golf course of runoff are newer than the course. Thank you. Ed Murray, why not put this to referendum?
There are limitations on what you can do for referendum. There, you, you can't put every decision the board has to make to a referendum. You wouldn't need the board. They're very restrictive and this wouldn't apply.
Suzanne Rocky, thank you for extending the time to consider all of these inputs. Thank you, Suzanne.
What does it mean?
If a specimen tree is dead, why is it treated differently from any other than, from any other dead tree?
Do you mean for removal purposes? I would guess.
It's not really treated differently. You would just file for the free permit and then remove it? Is that the question?
I, I think that why, why are they, why are they required to file a permit for a dead specimen tree? Is basically, basically the question. I, I think it's just to ensure that there's a process by which we've assured the township here that this specimen tree is in fact dead and you've, you're not going to pay a permit fee on the specimen tree removal if it's a dead tree.
Gregory Thompson, buds are formed at leaf drop if the tree is living and healthy. Thank you. That was, I'm guessing in response to the previous question about how a layperson to determine that a deciduous tree is dead in the winter. And that is the end of the comments as of 9:13 PM. Possible somewhere might come in, but that's, I have no more to read.
So Martha, if I may, are you looking for a motion to continue this hearing to the next board's meeting night, which would be Wednesday, December 2nd at 7:30 to continue the, the meeting? And listen to any additional questions that might come up with respect to any changes you might wish to make.
Yes, actually I will make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? I'm going to have to do roll call here. Fred?
Yes.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I say yes as well.
Appreciate everybody coming out and asking all the questions. It's good to hear from all the folks that have concerns.
And please sign up for our township email because we do send out all of the agendas for all the commissions and our meetings and our workshops.
Tom, this will close the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone.
Yes, thank you, Tom. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. See everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, we'll see you. Find out how to leave you, I will.
I can kick you out if you want.
I'd like to like you here to say that. Take me out in the, you know, the bad sense. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Digging room, thanks.
Two followers came in. They don't need to go to the public record, part of the record, but just a thank you from Mary Ann McCann and Anthony Cavasso said, good job tonight, EJ. So thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, acceptance of the minutes of the board of supervisors for October 7th, 2020 business meeting and the October 15th, 2020 budget workshop. Acceptance of reports, all departmental committee, commission and council reports as posted and received by the board of supervisors for the month of October 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll have to do roll call again here too. Okay, Fred?
Yes.
Mark?
I have no, no extra notes.
I.
Bob?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Okay, our treasures report and payments of bills for the period ending October 31st, 2020. Consideration of advertisement, oh, I'm sorry. Why don't we do the consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and the approval to pay the bills? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, EJ? I want to do the bills first.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm switching things up a little bit. I want to do the bills first.
Oh yeah, no problem. So I'll do, I'll just give a brief treasurer's report. General fund balance ended October, 3,961,791, a decrease of about 523,000 from the previous month. More than half of that is due to the MMO deposits for the pension fund. Still about $740,000 ahead of where we were at the end of October last year. To date, we, through the end of October, I should say, we've received about 71% of our budgeted revenues for the year. Spent about 51% of our budgeted expenditures. And as of, um, end of October, are carrying a general fund surplus of about $1.26 million, which is about six times the amount of surplus we had at the same point last year. So still in very good shape. As I mentioned last month, we do anticipate that surplus will, will shrink between now and the end of the year. But we're definitely on track to finish the year overhaul with this surplus. And the bills are good to go.
Okay, does the board have any questions or comments? EJ, do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, Fred, how do you vote?
Yes, favorite of those.
Yes, okay, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, the consideration of advertisement of the 2021 Schuylkill Township proposed budget for the adoption on December 20, I'm sorry, December 2nd, 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions?
No.
Do we have any public comment or questions, EJ, regarding the budget?
No. No.
Okay, Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Two minute reports. Mark, do you have any two minute reports?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. The PRPC, we're, we're finished up with the comp plan and there will be a public workshop on December 9th at, following the regular business meeting. Our regular business meeting is about 7:30 and the comprehensive plan meeting should start right after that around eight or eight, 8:15. So if you would like to participate, please show up. It will have public discussion and we'll be talking about planning for the future. So. And you can find details for that on our website and on the PRPC website, which is on Phoenixville Borough's website.
Okay, great. Bob, do you have any two minute reports?
No, just that the, we had a visit, or I should say, yes, we had a visit to the Anderson Farm with the historical commission. Mr. Mangy was kind enough to give us a tour and really impressed with what we see. It's going quite well. And anybody that's driven by, I'm sure you can see, one of the township's worst eyesores is turning into a, just a beautiful estate. So we're real grateful for that.
Okay, great. Susan, do you have any two minute reports?
I do not.
Okay, I was actually going to read this under announcements, but I really thought it was more appropriate under a two minute report. I just received a letter from Officer Jim Hennessy. It says, Dear Martha, on behalf of, of the Schuylkill Township Police Association, I would like to take a moment to express our sincere thanks to the board of supervisors for their continued support for our annual food drive. We would like to specifically mention your kind donation and your help at the drive-by drop-off day. We want to thank you for suggesting that event as it turned out to be a great success. We would also like to mention the extreme generous donation made by board member Bob Cooney. He has gone above and beyond his donations to help the local community. We would also like to thank the township roadmaster Nixon Serapino and the road crew staff for helping with deliveries on their lunch breaks. We would also like to thank Chief Federman and Lieutenant Fitzsimmons for helping to load the items onto the trucks. We would like to give a special thanks to Madeline Harbison for her continued help in spreading the word for our community events. We would most importantly like to thank each and every person who was able to donate to this year's drive. This year was fought, this year was by far our most successful event. As you know, food insecurity is very high this year. Thanks to our residents generosity, we were able to fill six truckloads with food. This is due to the kindness and generosity of the residents of our great township. With their continued support, we hope to grow the event in, in size each year. In past years, we have given the food to PAX and to St. Peters. This year, due to the pandemic, St. Peters had to temporarily stop their kitchen operation. They hope to start up again next summer. Because of that, all of the donated items were given to PAX. They will make sure that the donations will go to those individuals and families most in need in our community. In closing, we would again like to thank you and the board of supervisors for their continued support and look forward to doing this again next year. On behalf of the Schuylkill Township Police Association, Officer Jim Hennessy. Okay, EJ, do you have a two minute report?
Yes, and I don't know how to follow that up early in my desk. Just wanted to brief the board on an issue. About this past weekend, the weekend before, you may have seen some emails or some comments on local Facebook pages or Nextdoor apps regarding a concert or a series of concerts in Upper Providence Township at the Oaks on both Saturday and Sunday night that caused a lot of noise issues that was heard from residents in our township and apparently residents all the way as far as Royersford could hear it. I think the, the, at the height, it was like around 10 PM on Sunday night was when it was at its loudest. And our police department was, was inundated with a number of calls. Apparently this is the first time this has happened, but it's the worst it's been so far. And I think it might be the first time it's been on a, like a work night. It was Sunday night. They've been trying to do these outdoor concerts, like drive-in. I'm not quite sure the details, but to make a long story short, they've been getting a lot of complaints about it, not only from Schuylkill Township and our police department, but from another surrounding municipalities. And apparently Upper Providence Township has announced or decided to cancel all of these concert events at least through the end of the year until they can figure out a way to better mitigate the noise. So in case any of you had received any complaints about that, I just wanted to make you aware of that. There is still an outstanding noise complaint dealing from residents of the Moore Hall Development. From, I forget the name of it, but it's, it's some type of industrial facility across the river in Upper Providence Township. That apparently has been going on for a couple of years and we've gotten some complaints about it. We've looked into it. There's really nothing we can do. Representative Schusterman got involved to see if she could try to help. Representative Schusterman got involved to see if she could try to help. And I'm told that she was unsuccessful. So I've, I've been getting some more complaints from residents again specifically in the Moore Hall Development. Bill, I'll follow up with you. I just got another, another one today. Um, but again, I'm just, I, I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do. It's not in our township. But I'll keep you all updated once I, once we find out more. That's it.
Okay. Okay, great. Uh, board discussion items, old business update, the COVID-19 Township Operations and Protocols. EJ?
Uh, no change. The township building's still close to the public. All business is being conducted virtually or remotely. Um, all meetings, all township meetings are, are being held virtually, uh, for the foreseeable future. No, no end date has been announced yet on that. Um, so we're kind, this is our new status quo and appropriate notice.
Okay, um, EJ, I, I do know that there were a couple of residents that had mentioned to me that, uh, you know, we are allowed to have smaller group indoor meetings. Um, I just wanted to let the public be aware that if we have our five supervisors, our engineer, our attorney, our township manager, our secretary and our police, and a police officer attend one of our meetings. We have a limit of 55 people that are allowed in our meeting room. And according to the governor's recommend, or the CDC and the governor's recommendations, that would allow us to have 11 people. So that would only allow one person in the public to attend one of our meetings. So, um, I think we're going to be having our meetings remotely for the foreseeable future until, um, we're able to have more people in our room and when it makes sense. So, um, I just want to make that announcement and let the public be aware that this is the standard that we're, we're going by at the moment, so. Okay. Um, moving on, discussion, municipal parks invasive plant and weed control, EJ?
Yes, uh, the EAC of, a month ago requested, um, actually may have been two months ago, requested that we get a proposal to address, uh, invasives in the Valley Park and Pickering Preserve. Um, primarily that the biggest and most urgent concern was the fragmites that are growing in Valley Park. Um, so we got a proposal from Leeds Inc., um, about, uh, it was dated October 26th, so not, not quite two weeks ago. The EAC reviewed it at their meeting last week, but was, um, wanted some more information. Um, so they did not vote or make a recommendation on it. However, there is a, there is a time sensitivity and urgency to this due to the upcoming wear season. The fragmites really need to be, um, treated twice, uh, in consecutive years. And, uh, the township actually had them treated I don't, a number of years ago by the same company, but only did it once. And, and we've just seen them slowly grow back. And now they're really kind of proliferating in, in, in the park. And the reason I'm bringing this to the board, you know, obviously you can wait for the EAC to review it once we get more information, but it might be too late at this point to get the first application in this year, which, which I think really needs to happen. So, uh, the proposals for basically $750 for the 2020 application. Um, and then not to exceed a $1,500 for the 2021 application. Um, and this, this company will also be providing us a quote at a later time to address invasives in the Pickering Preserve. And then next year, um, upon request to look at the poison ivy and, and give us a proposal to treat that. But the fragmites are the urgent concern.
Okay, so it's the consideration of acceptance of Leeds Inc. Proposal for Valley Park Municipal Park Fragmighty Control for not to exceed amount of $2,250. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, do we have any more discussion? Uh, EJ, I just have one, I just have one quick question for you. So my understanding is that the reason why we want to get this done quickly is because it needs to happen before the first frost, first killing frost? Is that, okay? All right.
And I would just, as far as the cost goes, the, the not to exceed of 2250, that would be split between this year's budget and 750 this year and ever.
Right. Right, okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Are, EJ, are there any public comment on this?
Uh, there is not.
Okay. Uh, Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So. EJ, go for it. Okay, new business consideration. I've got to do something.
Lucky man.
Okay, consideration of appointment of Mr. Michael Bauer Township Resident to the Schuylkill Township Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee to replace Mr. Christopher Jacobs. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Um, EJ, did you want to make a comment on this?
Um, I would just mention Mike is, uh, Mike appears to be on the, the meeting right now. And I would just extend my thanks to him for his, his willingness to serve in this extremely important role on this newly formed committee we have.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, uh, does anyone have any comments or questions? Others, is there any public comment, EJ?
There is not.
Okay, Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Susan? And I vote yes too. Okay, consideration of advertisement of intent to appoint a certified public accountant for the Schuylkill Township 2020 audit. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, EJ, comment?
Yeah, we, we're required to do this every year. It's kind of a, just a formality where, you know, we have elected auditors, but the, the code allows you to appoint a CPA firm to conduct the audit. You're, we're required by law to advertise our intent to appoint a CPA firm every year. So usually they get started with the audit right away in January. So, um, we, we get the advertising out at this point in the year.
And this is something that we've done every year since we've had them, so.
He's done a good job too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they have. They've been really good.
Really good.
Is there any, uh, board comment? EJ, do we have any comment from the public?
No.
Okay, Fred, how do you vote?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan, how do you vote? Susan, we can't hear you.
Oh, really? Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And I vote yes as well. Um, discussion, the Devalt Trail Project Committee. Who's going to talk about this, Bob or EJ?
I can start into it, but I'm going to pass it off to EJ. I think you know a lot more than I do. Uh, got a call from one of the, uh, Charlestown Supervisors that I've known over the years and he said, we're late in the game. They've, uh, done some work, wanted to know if we wanted to be involved. And I said, well, send us everything you have, which wasn't much. And then he turned me over to Chris Lawrence, uh, who, uh, gave me some information, basically that, um, I guess back in 2005 was the last time they used the rails, their, the track that cuts, I think from Giant, uh, cuts through our township and then goes through Charlestown. And uh, we talked about it in the past, Martha, I remember, uh, years ago, it was brought up. Four or five years ago, they did a feasibility study from what he told me, and this is all from him. So I don't know how much is accurate. I think EJ will give you the, the, uh, the better details. Um, the cost at that time to buy uh, per mile was very high. And I think we walked, um, it was, I think, a million dollars a mile. Uh, but they, in, in their study, they've come way down, the wider ship doesn't justify an expense for them to reactivate. So now negotiations have come to a point where they think it's much more reasonable to maybe get that land. There's grants out there. Uh, and he started mentioning William Penn Delvaux, uh, DRV PC, Circuit Trails, there's, uh, there's some activity there. But the goal is to connect it from Phoenixville out to the Chester Valley Trail, uh, which I think personally would be a great idea. I know there's some, a lot of questions, uh, they're investigating that now as far as would the county help to fund this and maintain it? That would be one of their, uh, on their wish list as well as ours, I'm sure, if we went further down there. So I got a bunch more notes, but I think I'll just turn it over to EJ because you're going to give a better picture of this.
No, that, I mean, you, that was a, that was a great overview. I mean, procedurally, where we come into play at this point in the process, I was contacted by, uh, by TMAC, which is the Transportation Management Association of Chester County. They are working on behalf of Charlestown Township to basically conduct a study, uh, to try to figure out a plan for ownership and maintenance of this trail if it were to be, to be built. So, um, they worked with Charlestown Township earlier this year to apply for a grant, a, a TC DI grant that would pay for the study. Um, so T, and they were awarded the grant. So they're going to be conducting this study. Um, it's not really a feasibility study so much as it is, like I said, specifically, they're, they're basically trying to answer the question. If, if Norfolk Southern were to donate the land, to whom would they donate it to for, for the trail? And who would be responsible for maintaining it? Um, and what would the management of that land and that trail look like? So their, their goal is to establish a steering committee with representatives from, you know, all of the, the primary stakeholders, including the municipalities. And, and a small portion of this will go through, uh, Schuylkill Township. So, uh, they will be, they haven't formally requested us yet to appoint a member to the steering committee. Um, but they said we could proactively if we wanted to, but they're not, they're not quite at that point yet. They're still seeking some additional grant funding to match the TC DI grant. And that's where the William Penn Grant comes in. I think they have like $4,000 or $5,000 of, um, unfunded matching costs that they're trying to get another grant to cover. So, um, I, you know, I asked the question point blank, are they looking for, what are they looking for from us? And as far as finances go, are they looking for any money from, are they looking for any money from us for next year? Because obviously we're finalizing our budget. Um, and the answer was no, um, at least not for next year. They, and they, and at least through this phase of the planning and studying process, they're really just looking for representation on the steering committee. But certainly it's possible based on the results of that study that, you know, Schuylkill Township could get more involved and potentially incur costs, but that might be several years down the road. Um, so long story short for tonight, there's nothing you need to do if you, if you wanted to discuss and appoint a representative to this steering committee. At this point, you could, um, but like I said, they're not quite there yet.
Hey, EJ, he did mention one of the grants, uh, I think was due mid-November, um, the next week or two. We don't have to do anything with that, right?
Correct. So that was, yeah, that was the William Penn Grant. They were asking around to the other municipalities. They basically want to ma, make sure that no one else was applying for it because they thought it would hurt their chances of, of getting it for this match.
I have two questions. One, what, what, um, you said reduction in cost. What's the reduction, number one? And number two is, uh, what is the cost for our road department or for us to maintain it?
Well, that's what the research and Fred are trying to get. They're lobbying to see if the county will take the burden, uh, which I think is what everybody hopes, but that's part of.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, yeah, I think that's what everybody hopes. And, uh, hmm. That would be wonderful.
I know, uh, you know, we, we go over to the, uh, it's a Chester Valley now and Betswood and they're pretty crowded, a lot of crossings of, uh, roads and that sort of thing, but they're heavily used and you know, more trails, the better, I think, for getting off the road. When you talk about riding a bike or walking or jogging on the road, it's getting more and more dangerous. Uh, with, you know, people looking at their cell phones or just not paying attention and the trails have a lot of appeal, I think, going forward.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, well, um, I think we need to, um, consider someone, but I don't know that we have to make that decision tonight. Um, I think we can wait and see if there is someone who would like to be on this committee. So think about it. If you have an interest in it, um, then maybe we can put this on the agenda for another meeting. Okay, moving on, consideration of advertisement of the proposed ordinance 2020-06, amending the Township Ordinance Codified in Chapter 45, Pensions, Article 1, The Police Pension Plan, Section 45 dash. Is that 1A or IA?
1A.
1A definitions. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, um, EJ, you want to tell us, uh, what this is all about?
Yes, this is a, this is a cleanup matter, uh, resulting from last year's, uh, contract negotiations with the police, which, uh, a benefit was added where, where police officers could sell back up to 60 hours of unused sick time each year in December, uh, with the caveat that any compensation for that sick time buyback could not count toward their pensionable salary. But this, the pension ordinance just needs to be updated to be consistent with that. So the only thing we really needed to change was the definitions in the police pension ordinance. And the language was provided to us by our, um, our pension, uh, actuary.
Okay, great. Uh, are there any questions from the board? Okay, EJ, are there any pub, public comment or questions? Okay, Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Moving on. Consideration of Financial Security Release Number One for the Pulte Group Valley Forge Green Townhome Development in the amount of Thank you, Madeline. Let me start over again. In the amount of 800, 827,209.14 as recommended in the TNM Associate's Letter of Recommendation dated November 2nd, 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, um, let's see, Russ or Paul, do you have any comments to make on this?
Um, not, not real comments, just a little quick, uh, summary. Is this, it's odd, it's kind of the first, uh, release that they've requested. Um, I think their total escrow, uh, is over 1.4 million dollars. Um, we did reduce their amount, uh, originally asked for. Uh, we wanted to retain some additional monies as it related to, um, sedimentation erosion control. And also, I believe, um, there were some roof leader work that still had to be done. So we didn't release that amount too. So that's, that's all. And, and typically, once again, just because we're kind of new, uh, to the township. We go out, we do the inspections, we, we determine, we have a detailed spreadsheet. If you're so inclined to look at that, there's a lot of numbers and explanation on there. You can see exactly what was asked for and what was paid. So that's all.
Now, Russ, I'm kind of new at this. How do you come up with the number that you did? I think they were asking for maybe 10,000 more. Is there a formula that's based on percentage of completion or?
Yeah, it's somewhat subjective, you know, especially like we say, as far as sedimentation and erosion control. When we look at that, there's kind of a judgment involved in that to set what that percentage is. They ask for, we look at it, maybe we feel comfortable with the number, maybe we don't. As a result of that, we, we do, um, like I said, set a percentage we feel comfortable with, knowing how much is left in the job yet. So it's no precise formula. It's some, it's some judgment. It's judgment about what the inspector sees, how the job's been performing to date, uh, as how we, much we want to hold back. I mean, some of the items, it's pipe, it's, if they've laid 100 feet of pipe and it's, it's correct, they'll get released for 100 feet of pipe based upon the unit price that's in the spreadsheet that was attached to that. That's very straightforward. Things like sedimentation erosion control are, are, are more subjective, quite frankly.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any other questions for, um, Russ or Paul? Or EJ? All right, EJ, do we have any public comment on that?
Nope.
Okay, Fred? Okay. Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark.
Hi.
Fred, or I'm sorry, Bob.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Do we have any additional business? No, I do have a few announcements here. A simple ask, wear a mask. Yesterday, Pennsylvania reported its highest daily COVID-19 virus cases in six months. Take these simple precautions to protect yourself, your family and your community. Wear a mask in public, wash your hands frequently and thoroughly with soap for at least 20 seconds. Practice social distancing, avoid touching your face and clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. To stay informed on the pandemic in our area, visit chesco.org slash 4376 slash coronavirus dash covid dash 19. Residents are reminded to not blow or rake leaves into the streets. The township does not have curbside leaf pickup. And if you dump your leaves into roadways, you may be cited. Residents may drop leaves at the township compost yard at any time from October 19th through December 19th. Only leaves are accepted. No yard waste. Tree limbs or shrubs may be dumped. Violations of this policy may result in the yard being available by appointment only. The township office will be closed on Thursday, November 26th and Friday, November 27th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Does anyone have any other announcements they'd like to make? Okay. EJ, do we have any public comment?
Um, yes, but I have one quick announcement. I really.
Okay.
I guess I should have brought up under additional business. I just remembered, um, I need people to sign checks. Um, if anyone is available either tomorrow afternoon or Friday morning. That would be, um, the best time for me to arrange to have the check signed. So.
I can do it Friday morning. I can do it Friday morning.
You need another? I can do Friday midday.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
That's more than email me. I could do in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have one quick addition. I've gotten a few questions about the township truck that comes around and picks up, uh, uh, that cleans up areas on the curb for stormwater. Um, that truck does not have the capacity to pick up piles of leaves and does not have, uh, uh, we, we would like to just make that, oh, clear. Please do not consider that a leaf pickup truck. That is a stormwater drain cleaning truck. And if it's cleaning up the curb, it's because that drains into the storms, stormwater drain. So please do not clog up the, the street with leaf piles.
Okay, that's good.
Spot on.
So, um, any public comment?
Yes, um, Steve Coons, are we going to talk about the Valley Forge Shore Authority right away at the Pickering Preserve?
Um, Steve, I think that, uh, we will have EJ get in touch with you, um, outside of a public meeting. So how's that? For an answer. Okay. All right. Any other public comment?
Yes, uh, Susan, R and Shield, 130 Valley Park Road, Phoenixville. Is there any reason why there can't be a food or coat drive more often, especially during these difficult times for people? Also, on another note, has approval for a helicopter pad been approved in the area near the township building? A red helicopter has flown over my house several times in the past month and a couple of times it was quite low. Besides being inconsiderate in general, I have two geriatric critters in the pasture who are more likely than not to do something stupid when frightened.
There used to be a helicopter. I haven't seen it for a good while. Uh, up the hill from her above the golf course. I don't know if that's the same person or somebody else, uh, got a helicopter locally, but years ago, there was a helicopter you could see near the old, uh, Maplecroft Dairy. And I don't know who owned it or, you know, if they started flying again or what the story is, but that might be the person.
Um, the other thing is that, um, hospital has a helipad, so it could be that. I have seen a number of, um, low-flying helicopters. Um, they're medic copters. I don't know if it's red. Um, but I do know that I have seen helicopters go to the hospital because I do know they have a, a helipad. So, um, but to answer her question, no, the township does not have a helipad on its property. Um, and I don't know if anyone on, in the township has a helipad. So, um, I think that answers her question.
Yeah, she, and she continued on, um, sorry, I lost where, I lost my spot. Uh, the random fireworks set off by neighbors in the area and gunshots from the golf course are scary enough, but I have no control over those. I'm hoping there might be rules about how long they can fly over residences. We do not have really any authority to regulate air space, air travel. Um, that's, that's done above our level at the federal level. So, um, you know, zoning, we, we can regulate helipads in our zoning, uh, but as Martha said, this is not a new, something that's recently been approved or considered by the board. Um, as far as the flight, we, we have no, uh, I'll pass this along to the police department and they can maybe pass it along to higher up agencies of the concern. But it's possible, like you said, that it, it might be the medevac helicopter, especially if it's red. And then the first question was, is it, was there any reason we can't do the food and coat drives more often?
Oh, I forgot about that. Um, I did speak to, um, Jim Hennessy and, um, I think he had just said that they wanted to do it once a year. I mean, we can ask the, uh, the, we can, I could talk to Officer Hennessy about it. Um, but it really is up to them. It's not up to us. This is the police association. It's their activities. Um, and this year, unfortunately, they will not be able to do the coat drive because the, uh, organizations that usually accept their coats because of COVID are not accepting coats this year. So, um, we will not be able to do that. And I know they are trying to do uh, something with shop with a cop, but I don't know if they've been able to, um, come up with that. But, um, I will, um, talk with him and, um, see if there's maybe something we could do more often. I do know that, uh, PACs will accept food, uh, from anyone at any time. And they are located in the borough of Phoenixville right now. So.
Yeah. Alternately, they accept donations of money.
Yes.
And I know we've participated that way because we don't normally have enough canned food for them. So. Definitely, definitely look into that. It's available online. It's easy and quick. So that they can, they need the help either way.
Yeah. And, uh, but I will talk to Officer Hennessy and see if they may be willing to do, you know, a coat drive, or I'm sorry, a food drive maybe in the late spring, early summer. So. Right. Any other public comment?
Yeah, just a follow-up from, from Susan, R and Shield as well, um, in response to our responses. She said, uh, in response to Bob's answer about the helicopter, that seems to be the area it's coming from, Bob. I don't believe it's a hospital. Um, and then to Mark's comment, I have donated to them. Thanks for the reminder. So thank you. This R and Shield.
Okay. Any other public comment?
No.
Okay. Uh, do we have any pending business?
Just, um, yeah, I mentioned it in email to the board, uh, yesterday. We do have two new, um, applications. One's a subdivision, a minor, that three lot subdivision on Diamond Rock Road. And one is a commercial land development on Dawson Drive, um, single lot, uh, about a 6,000 square foot warehouse. Um, that application's not yet complete. I think we're still waiting on the fee. The three lot subdivision on Diamond Rock Road was complete as of Friday with the fee. So uh, we're going to begin to review on those. And as soon as I have them electronically, I'll show them with the board. But um, obviously the first stop will be the planning commission.
Planning commission.
Can I ask you a quick question about that three acre? I was reading through that. Is that, it looks like three lots on a three acre piece. Is that R1 zoning or FR up there?
Um, I can't, I'm pretty sure that's FR. I'm, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the zoning map on my, Diamond, you're talking about the one on Diamond Rock Road, right?
Diamond Rock. I know that the owner, uh, met me, well, I met the owner years ago, probably 20 years ago. I know the, the property where it stands, I should say. And I didn't think was divisible into three, but I guess we'll let that go through the process and learn more.
I, I do think, um, just based on an initial, just a, a look at it, I think there's going to be zoning relief that's required. Um, pre-force subdivision approval can be granted.
Okay.
So that might be a little bit of a process.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other pending business? All right. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you very much.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, EJ. And.
Swatting away those questions all night. You're doing great.
I appreciate everyone chiming in. That was very helpful.
We needed to hear that. That's what we didn't get to hear because of the, the way meetings are being held and there's not as much activity in the, you know, in the room. So it's good to hear all those questions.
Yeah.
I'm impressed. Yeah, you guys were troopers.
Okay. All right. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Guys.
Bye.
All right. Thanks. See ya.
Thanks, everyone.